Day will be given by Monsignor William Manger with Saint Anne Catholic Church. If you'll please come forward Pastor and everyone if you so choose, please stand with me and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Heavenly Father, we present ourselves humbly before you, asking our blessing on this city council as it prepares to conduct its business for the operation of the city of Beaumont. The atmosphere is charged with coming elections. Let not political interests distract from trying to attain your will for the good of our community. We are all responsible, councilmen and citizens, to be our best and to do our best for the community of people you have placed here. We know that your powerful, creative love reaches to all in our city, whether they are successful or unsuccessful, well-liked or poorly clad, adhering to many religious practices. If there's a better way to praise you and love you, lead us to that place. May we think with compassion on those disadvantaged, whether from poverty or handicap, or even racial disparity, as all have your spirit within them. May we see you in each other. Bless this day and our soccer players. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Monsignor. We appreciate you coming today. Hey, we have the roll call, please.
Mayor Ames here. Mayor Protim Felshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Pate.
Here.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Muton.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have two proclamations today, and if you are here for that purpose, we would appreciate if you would wait till we finish both of them before you exit, if you do have to leave. And our first one would be delivered by Councilmember Pate.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Bend it like Beckham. That'll hit some of you folks later on. But whereas today we are thrilled to celebrate, the 2021 Division One State Champion Boys' Soccer Team from Kelly High School, the mighty Bulldogs, have been working so hard to achieve this goal. On behalf of the city of Beaumont, I would like to express my congratulations and excitement for their recent victory. Whereas the Kelly High School Boys' Soccer Team defeated Austin Savin High School in Round One and then defeated San Antonio Christian High School in the regionals, the team conquered, we're gonna get better with these verbs, conquered the San Antonio Central Catholic High School in the regionals and took the championship when unfortunately the Pope went down, Pope John XIII High School. And whereas Kelly High School Boys' Soccer Team was undefeated, undefeated, in all taps, all the taps games they played, in four district games, the team scored 72 goals, and that's a lot for soccer, and only allowed 21 points. Whereas the Kelly High School Soccer Team, seniors on the team will be signing college scholarships to continue their playing careers, Jonathan Harris, Sam Lane, Robert Leanne, and whereas 12 players were named to the district, all district team, and five players were named to the all-state team. Now, think about how many soccer players on the field at one time and realize just how good these guys are. Whereas the players who have been honored today include Adam Brasher, Zachary Brasher, Anish Dushy, Anthony, if I mispronounce your name, I apologize, Gambreth, James Greer, Jonathan Harris, Matthew Haney, Aiden Hartfield, Christian Key, Joseph Knott, Samuel Lane, Greg Loudermilk, Robert Lino, Dan Kyle Lee, Riley Little, Masad... Mads... Ma... Max... See? Michael Madske, Sam... Samuel Maloney, Samuel Montalbano, Adrian Newrights... Newrider, Ashton Armstead, I got that one right, Anthony Patella, Blake Purnell, Rick Renfro. I'm... Folks, I'm doing the best I can. I remember when the only Italians went to Kelly. And a few Pates. I'll just put it like that. Gabriel Rosser, Victory San... Victor Sanchez, Max Thadford, Drew Turley, Escaville Uribe. And now therefore Becky Ames, the mayor of the city of Beaumont applauds the Kelly High School Soccer Team for their outstanding success and does hereby proclaim April 20th Kelly High School Boys' Soccer Day in Beaumont, Texas, and we wish the high school team and future many, many victories. And it's signed by the mayor Becky Ames and the seal is affixed. So if you guys would like to come forward, and I'd be happy to present you with this proclamation, you can shake hands, fist bump, do whatever you want to do, and then say a few words. Hey, Dan.
Y'all come this way, too. Go around and around, okay?
Congratulations.
Only shaking hands.
Congratulations.
Y'all can take a picture.
Congratulations. Proud of you, brother.
Whatever you want.
Go team.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank y'all, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Proud of you.
Y'all be great, real proud of you, so proud of y'all, thank you.
Thank you, brother. We'll do whatever you want.
Does someone want to say a few words? Coach? Anybody?
Who's counting?
Now, boys, if you could take a picture with you guys on the stage.
Sure. Sure.
Oh, yeah.
So, hey, boys, y'all might come up and get that picture with all of y'all.
Y'all can unmask for the picture.
I think I need a box.
Oh, Kelly! Woo!
Not ordinary problems. Good job! Good to see you.
Good job, good job.
Congratulations. He used to just be Messinas to Tarsas, fill in the blank.
So congratulations, y'all have made Beaumont proud once more. We're so proud of y'all and look forward to seeing you again next year if you're not a senior, okay? Thank y'all so much. And I'm going to deliver the next proclamation, and I have a lot of favorite people in the world, and this happens to be one of my favorite people in the whole world, so I'm very pleased to deliver this proclamation today. Whereas today we celebrate Chief James Singletary's distinguished awards from the Texas Tactical Police Officers Association, TTPOA. On April 9th, 2021, Chief Singletary received two coveted awards among Texas Tactical Operators, the TTPOA Lifetime Achievement Award, as well as the Council of Warriors Award. The Council of Warriors Award is a rare recognition given to SWAT officers who have a distinguished legacy as a tactical operator. And whereas Chief Singletary was given an ornate tomahawk with his Council of Warriors Award, as Shawnee and... Okay, I gave the phonetic on this, where did I put it? Shawnee and... How is it, Hallie?
Iroquois.
Iroquois, okay. Iroquois legend states, "Once a warrior has fought his last fight, he retires to speak as an elder, to stand counsel among young warriors. His tomahawk will rest next to his hearth in its own place for all to see and admire." No, he's not retiring. The chief has not fought his last fight, like the legend says, but the career is most certainly one to be admired. And whereas in 1970, Chief Singletary began his career as a patrol officer with the Beaumont Police Department and advanced to become lieutenant over seven different divisions, patrol, criminal investigations, internal affairs, training and personnel, drug enforcement task force, special weapons and tactics team, narcotics and vice. He retired from Beaumont Police Department in 2000 with 30 years of service. And whereas after his retirement, the United States Department of Justice pursued Chief Singletary to work as the law enforcement coordinator in the United States Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Texas. In 2002, he joined the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department as a major of the Narcotics Task Force and commander of the SWAT team. And whereas on September 30th, 2011, Chief Singletary came home and accepted the position of chief of police of the Beaumont Police Department. As chief, he has implemented a body armor policy for uniformed officers, acquired a satellite gym to help officers maintain job readiness, adopted new technologies included predictive analytic software to identify crime patterns, body worn cameras to better preserve evidence, virtual interactive shooter training, and forensic tools to analyze data from electronic devices and weapons. In 2018, the BPD created the region's first unmanned aerial systems unit. And whereas during his tenure, BPD started working with regional federal task force, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the Drug Enforcement Administration, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco and Firearms, and the U.S. Marshal Service. In partnership with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco and Firearms, Chief Singletary secured BPD as the area agency to house equipment and software for the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network, which provides automated ballistic identification forensic... for forensic investigations. And whereas Chief Singletary established a cops and kids program, a police explorers post, a clergy and police partnership, which we call CAP, and several mentoring projects targeting at-risk youth, as well as the assignment of a full-time mental health liaison officer to assist regional mental health providers in carefully handling citizens in crisis. He has accomplished these things and so many more while simultaneously ensuring that the city of Beaumont is safe, as safe as possible for our citizens. And now therefore, I Becky Ames, mayor of the city of Beaumont, applaud our chief and the positive contributions he has bestowed upon our community, family, fellow law enforcement, and friends alike, and do hereby recognize this 20th day of April 2021 in Beaumont as Chief Singletary Day, and wish him many, many more years of dedicated service to our great city. Accordingly, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed, and I signed it today, April 20th, 2021. And Chief Singletary's daughter is here, Hallie Gates, and she actually made this really big for me so I could read it and I didn't see it, so I read it small, so I apologize for that. Thank you very much, Hallie. See, always prepare, just like your dad. Chief, if you'd like to come forward, please accept this proclamation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, man. Thank you. If you want to say hi to everybody and feel free to say a few words.
Say a few words.
Okay. Iroqua.
Iroquois.
Iroquois.
I'm Native American. Just kind of jumps out.
I love that.
A big word.
Hey.
So if y'all didn't put it together, the chief received this lifetime achievement award, award, not this past Friday, but the Friday before, a week ago, in Dallas, and we're so proud of him to shed... for shedding this great light on Beaumont. Chief, thank you so much. Thanks to your department and everyone that you work with here at the city. We're proud of you and we love you.
Wow, thank you very much, and I apologize for that long dissertation. That just means I've been around a long, long time. God has been great with... blessing me with a great family. Some of the sneakiest police officers I've ever seen, they got me all the way to Dallas and I didn't think I thought I was getting awarded for our SWAT team, and I didn't know what it was gonna be for me. Bless me with... God blessed me with those guys, greatest cops in the United States, and y'all too, and we appreciate you guys. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, chief. We appreciate you. Proud days for Beaumont. We're so glad y'all are here, but now, if you have to leave, now's the time, which of course you're always welcome to stay.
I don't know if Hallie was... Chief's daughter.
I was sitting there straining to read that and...
And you slid it over.
I saw that print and I thought, wow, that's a little one.
Gee, well.
It's just the big.
No, I'm talking about the other one.
And I'm old.
I didn't...
With no glasses or contacts.
I never thought that.
Okay, now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today on scheduled agenda items one through three or the consent agenda, the time to do so is now. If you haven't already done so and you'd like to speak on one of these items, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room, hand it to the city clerk at the front of the room, she will call out your name. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. If you are here to speak in the public hearing for the 2021 Annual Action Plan, I will open up the microphone for that public hearing separately, or if you're here to speak on any other item, I will open up the microphone at the end of our meeting for that purpose. But right now, it's for one through three or the consent agenda. I don't have any mayor. Okay, if there's no one, okay, there appears to be no one. Counsel, may I have a motion, please, on the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Is there any discussion, questions, comments? There being none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number one, please.
Mayor Counsel, item number one is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a franchise for solid waste collection and transportation services to G. and H. Solutions LLC. The franchise agreement would provide for a term of one year from its effective date and a franchise fee of 7% of gross revenues received for service. According to the city charter, franchise ordinances require readings at three separate council meetings. This is the second reading. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, Counsel. You have heard the reading of item number one. Questions, comments, discussion?
Move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number two, please.
Item number two is to consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one to the contract with Global Emergency Services LLC related to the Lawson Canal Reclamation Debris Hauling Project. Back on January the 26th of 2021, city council awarded a contract to Global Emergency Services in the amount of $180,000 for the project. Proposed change order number one is in the amount of $44,460. It's needed for the addition of a little over 2,200 cubic yards of debris to be hauled due to unforeseen site conditions and an under calculation of the amount of debris to be removed from the canal. A total of 10 calendar days will be added to the contract for the additional work. Funds are available in the water fund. This will not be the end of this today, meaning there's gonna be more work to do even after this change order. Bart Barcoviak can discuss that or give you additional information, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Counsel. You have heard the reading of item number two. Is there a motion on this item, please?
Move to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second on the floor? Okay. Right? You second? Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor, any discussion? Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, on the change order, the unit price per cubic yard that they're charging is $20. Did they clarify a price in the base bid originally?
It was the same, $20.
Okay, thank you. Next question I have, on the resolution, we're saying the new estimated completion date is April 27th, which is less than 10 days away. My question is, is they're saying they need an additional 10 days, so that date should probably be adjusted for... Let's see. I don't know if that's the work that already started.
It hasn't started yet, but I believe they're capable of getting it done by the 27th, from what I understand.
Fair enough. I was just saying that those 10 days don't add up to that amount, so...
Yeah. The date's in the resolution?
Or in the front... in the cover page, sorry.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
No other question?
Okay. Councilmember Getz?
Mr. Barcoviak, what additional work is going to be needed to be done that the city manager was referring to?
Originally, Freezin Nichols estimated, using a survey performed in 2016, that we'd have to remove 8,543 cubic yards of fill in order to get the canal back to its original state before it started being filled in. When we paused work, we were already at almost 9,000 cubic yards, 8,983 cubic yards. One problem is that the estimate did not account for the vegetation. Vegetation had to be hauled off because the debris in question contains concrete and asphalt, which prevents us from being able to mulch that. The other factor is just that the site was highly compacted to a greater degree than we would have expected, so when you dig it out, you get a kind of fluff factor on that soil, because you don't put it in the truck to the same density as it is compacted in the ground. So what we're estimating, this 25% or a little less than 25% allowed under state law to increase this, will remove the 2,223 cubic yards that's piled up on the site right now. We're gonna have to come back to you and bid to actually excavate and restore the profile of the canal, as it's supposed to be done per the Corps of Engineers. We're tentatively estimating right now that that's gonna be another 5,777 cubic yards to remove off the site before we're done. So there's a lot more material there as the bottom line than what we were originally expecting.
So how much more are we looking at in having to spend to do that, 5,000 plus cubic yards?
If it ends up being the 5,777, that'd be, under the current price, that'd be another 116 grand, which would bring it up to, what, 180, 224, 300 and some odd thousand? And again, we're being required to do this, the Army Corps of Engineers saw that the canal was filled in without a permit. City was notified, I think Haney Tome had brought it to y'all back in 2013, and we... the city attempted to apply for a permit after the fact to allow us to leave the soil there, and we were denied and told that we had to put it... pull it back out and restore it.
How far back does it go that we were filling in this canal, and why do we do this in the first place? Does anybody know?
Well, it was under the previous director of water utilities, but my understanding was that it was being done both to save time from having to haul it to the landfill, and there was some tentative plan to park vehicles on the filled site in the event of a flood to prevent them from being flooded out, was the theory.
So we actually put the dirt in there?
We did. And it was just, if you normally go do a water sewer job and you have that material left, where we'd normally bring it to the dump or to one of our sites, we'd... it was being directed to be brought here and then compacted.
No questions, Counsel? Okay, if there's none, there is a motion and a second on the floor, and I guess we will see this again. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Mayor Counsel, item number three is to consider resolution authorizing additional compensation to the Beaumont Independent School District related to the school crossing guard program, and authorizing the city manager to amend the interlocal agreement with BISD or to execute a new interlocal agreement with BISD, depending on the city council's resolution or determination. At this time, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor Ames.
Thank you. Before we take action on this item today, I believe this was put on by a couple of council members after the last meeting, and before we do that, I think we need to go back to where this started so we can do this properly, make sure we do everything right. I have had some conversations with BISD and the attorneys, and so it started six, eight months ago when our agreement was changed, that's fine. After that, councilmembers Muton and Samuel brought it back, I guess it was last week, and there was a motion and a second on the floor, and then there was an amended motion that came forward by Councilmember Neal and seconded by Councilmember Getz, and that amended motion was to table the item until we could have a joint meeting with the Board of Trustees, and that is scheduled for today. So with that said, as I understand it, when we look at this from a legal standpoint and how we need to move forward, if we do want to move forward with this today, the first thing that needs to happen, if you so choose, the amended motion needs to be rescinded. It can't be voted on again because the last motion that's... or the last motion that passed in a 4-3 vote was to table this until the joint meeting could take place as soon as possible. All right? And so with that said, if y'all decide to do that, I'm not telling you what to do, I'm telling you what has to happen if you decide to. And then after that, that we do have to... we have to... first, we have to deal with the amendment, and then we go back to the original motion. And Councilmember Muton, I don't think you ever clarified that motion, I think the motion for amendment was put on the floor. I think the motion for amendment was put on the floor before that happened. So that needs to be clarified. And then, after that's clarified and action's taken on that, if y'all want to go back to this item number three, then we can do that. I will let you know that I did check on it yesterday. And the agreement that is in place now was started July first, two thousand and twenty, and it goes through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. That's what's still intact now. And that is the one where it's ninety thousand dollars the first year or half or ninety thousand dollars, whichever is greater, which is less than ninety thousand dollars. And then forty-five thousand the second year, twenty-two-five the third year, and then nothing after that. But that term is July first through September thirtieth, July first of two thousand and twenty through September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. Do you choose to amend?
I pulled my amended motion.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, does the second have to agree to... Because Councilmember Getz was the second. Doesn't he have to agree to pull that motion as well since he was the second? Do you pull the motion as well?
I pull the motion. I pull my second.
Okay, thank you. And you're in a second?
Yes, second, second.
Yes, I'm a second, second.
All right. All right, so all in favor of rescinding?
Discussion?
There can be some discussion, sure. But this is for rescinding the amended motion?
The amended motion, yes, I do.
Okay.
I do understand the procedure as stated. That was a mo... The amended motion was a motion with a condition precedent, meaning there was to be a meeting with the school board prior to making a decision on the amended motion. It did require working with the school district to set up the meeting, and there were school board members who adjusted their schedules for that as well as we did provide for a special meeting to adhere to that. If it is the desire of council to do that, I understand. But I think it is being somewhat disrespectful to the school board trustees in asking for a meeting in order for us to discuss the item that's on the agenda. And that was what I understood was the purpose of the amended motion. But now, without discussion with the school board, they're wanting to move forward. And I'm not certain as to... It's going to require Ms. Mouton to recall her motion also.
Correct. Well, if she chooses to, yes.
If she chooses to. From what I've seen thus far, I'm not really comfortable not knowing what's going to be placed on the floor as a motion. I do know what Ms. Mouton, Councilmember Mouton's motion was requesting. I just hope that this is one of those lessons learned whereby we be considerate of as many factors affecting our decisions as possible. I just, it's one of those things. Fool me once, it's on me. Fool me twice, it's on you. And normally, you don't get a third time. And for sake of working with this council, I will allow that motion. That will be up to Councilmember Mouton whether she withdraws her motion. But I just believe it's very disrespectful for us to do it the way that it's occurred now.
Okay, so I do have... Is there any other discussion? Because I do have a motion and a second on the floor to rescind the motion from last week to table it. Until after the... Table it until after the meeting.
When I made my second to the amended motion last week, I stated that I thought there was a need, and I continue to think that there is a need for the City Council of Beaumont to meet with the school board to discuss ways the two entities can collaborate. And I believe we still need to do that. But I said last week, and I'll say again this week, that I think that that needs to be done after the election when we have the new council seated and the new school board seated so that going forward, we can include those officers and officials that will be in place to talk about ways that we can collaborate going forward. As it turns out, this meeting was put on the agenda for tonight, this joint meeting. I didn't know anything about it until I got the agenda on Friday afternoon. It also turns out that two of the council members that are running for mayor are required to be elsewhere tonight for our live televised debate. So I think that that probably should have been taken into account. I personally would rather be at the polls, working the polls and doing the things necessary in my reelection campaign than trying to force a joint meeting onto my schedule tonight. And I think that probably all of us that have opponents feel that way. So, you know, this is... I don't know how the school district feels about it. I know how one school board member feels about it, and, you know, he doesn't feel that this needs to happen tonight, but I certainly haven't polled the school board members. I mean, I agreed to pull my second, but I do think that we need to revisit this idea of having a joint meeting until sometime when we can figure out how that meeting is going to proceed, what's going to be on that agenda, the topics for consideration for collaboration. Because, you know, there's a lot of things that we can collaborate with the school district on besides crossing guards. There's a lot of things that we need to be thinking about, and just one week isn't enough time to give that due justice, so...
Okay. Well, there's nothing to say that in the future that a new council or the existing council can't meet in a joint meeting. And I, for one, think that should happen. I thought it should happen before when we used to do it, and then we had to stop for whatever reason. But I will tell you that I did, because of, I was following the action that was given by this council, which four people voted for, that we meet jointly with the school district. I reached out to the president, Segi, and Dr. Allen immediately. She's here. So if I say anything wrong, I'm sure she will correct me, and I hope she will. And I was told that she had heard back from six trustees, and they would like to meet before the election. I chose a Tuesday because typically we block off Tuesdays. I had no earthly idea until Councilmember Fellshaw told me that the two mayor candidates had an event tonight. I did not know that till yesterday or whatever day you told me, Saturday, I don't know. Anyway, so, if I could just finish real quick. So with that being said, I was asked when I met with, when I talked with them if we would still have the meeting, even if there was another one that needed to happen. They have this posted. If we do take action today in this meeting or we are posted to take action tonight, either way is okay. But the school board can also take action tonight if they want to accept our proposal that we come forward with. So I was not trying to, as stated, I was not trying to do this quickly. This, we meet on Tuesdays. So when I'm going to set something up for the council, I try to always do it on Tuesdays. Any type of work session, any type of retreat, anything like that. There was no way for me to know that there was a Channel Twelve mayoral candidate thing. And even that there is, I don't think it starts till six o'clock. Don't expect this to last a long time. But I've made a commitment to be there, and y'all can decide what you want to do. We don't have to have, if we take action today, if we don't have to have a quorum over there. But the school board will have to have a quorum because they are posted to take action as well. So that's what happened. And I want to say it again that Dr. Allen is back there. I can't hardly see her, but I think she's back there. She did tell me that she had heard back from six school board members, and they wanted to take action before the election. So to try to help that because we even talked about, I think Councilmember Pate wanted to know if it was going to be next week or not. And we talked about it on Tuesday, that we could have it quickly. So that's what happened. So I plan to go. Y'all can go if you want to. But that's how it goes.
Okay, so if you don't have a quorum of the city council there, obviously no action can be taken.
We cannot take action, however, as soon as I can get a vote through on this rescinding of the amended motion from last week, as soon as I can get a vote on that, I'm going to go to the next step, and then I'll go to the next step. That's how it has to work because of all the different things that have happened in front of everyone or behind the scenes, however it might have been.
Mayor?
Yes.
In light of what's been stated, we took an oath and we have a duty to make decisions on behalf of the city council, on behalf of the citizens of our city, right now. Are we to, on important issues from this point until the new council is seated? Does that mean we put aside all business? Or we just choose what business we're going to set aside? We are the council members. We are the body at this time, and right now. We are the ones to make the decisions, and I believe that is what we should do. But I will call for a point of order, mayor. I'd like to ask our city attorney. At the last meeting, there was a motion and a second. And subsequently, there was an amended motion made with a condition precedent. And there was a second to that. And that told me that that item, the item that's on the agenda right now, is not really appropriate to be discussed or voted on because the condition precedent was that we meet with the school board before resolving the motion that was on the floor last week. I'd like to know, is that proper or is it improper?
Well, I agree that the amendment did create a condition precedent that the council meet with the BISD board prior to acting on the underlying motion. The motion that's on the floor now is to rescind the amendment should that pass and that reactivates the original motion. The item that's on the agenda today is very, very similar. Actually, it's a little more broad than the item that was on the agenda last week upon which the original motion was made. So that, the original motion is reactivated once the amendment, if the motion passes, once the amendment is rescinded.
But the discussion on the amended motion, is that not a result of what's posted today? Number three?
Yes.
That's why, that's what grants the ability to rescind the motion. Otherwise, would not, it have been mandatory to take the action precedent prior to resolving the previous motion?
In all actuality, what's on the agenda today should not be on the agenda today.
Exactly.
If the amendment passes, if the amendment passes, it reactivates last week's motion.
If rescinding the omission?
Rescinding the amendment reactivates last... Because the amendment was to amend the original motion made by Councilmember Mouton, not the item that's on the agenda today. The item that was on the agenda last week.
I understand.
Had the, when the amendment passed, it was saying meet with the BISD, which is scheduled for five o'clock today. Whatever happened there would have been the condition precedent to the original motion made by Councilmember Mouton.
So if the amended motion is withdrawn, it goes back to the original motion from last week, it would be possible to amend, to motion to amend that?
The original motion.
Original motion. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that could be an amendment to delay, to reconsider the motion from last week at some other time. That could be another condition precedent amendment. Is that correct?
My hesitancy is, is that the amendment, an amendment is to modify a motion.
Right.
It is not to destroy a motion. It is not to delay a motion. And what happened with the condition precedent, I'm not sure was a correct or proper amendment. Now, we don't operate under Robin's Rules of Law. Robin's Rules of Law would not have allowed the amendment to create a condition precedent to the original motion. It would meant only to modify, alter, or tweak the motion and allow it to go forward, not to delay or to kill the motion.
I understand. It's, there's no doubt that it's a mess.
It's confusing.
But it's not in my control. Councilmember Pate?
Thank you, mayor. That was one of the clarifications that I asked when Taylor made this motion. I said, are you trying to set this up for next week? And the clarification was, no, I'm not trying to set up the meeting next week. I'm just trying to set up a time in the future, if my memory serves me correctly.
And I said to you, we can't say when it'll be because we have to check with the trustees.
But I specifically said, was he trying to set it up next week? And he said that wasn't part of his amendment. Now, if this amendment passes, we go back to Robin's original motion, which we can vote up or down, amend, or do whatever councils do all over the United States of America, right? Well, if they, if, there's no, following any sort of precedent. So the point of order that I'd like to call is, let's vote on this.
I'm trying to.
Yeah.
But y'all want to... Okay, so I'm going to call for the vote if there's no other discussion. There is a motion on the floor and a second to rescind the amendment of the motion that was made last week to table this until the council was able to meet with the BISD Board of Trustees. That's what the motion is. There is a second. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Now, I'll go back to the original motion that was made also last week before the amended motion by Councilmember Mouton. Do we, do you have anything for us?
I would like to amend my motion
Okay, but you didn't even clarify your motion last week, I don't think.
Right, let me clarify my motion first.
City Attorney, isn't that correct? Since she did not get the opportunity to clarify her motion, would it really be an amendment or wouldn't it be a clarification of what she was putting on the floor?
It would only be a clarification.
Thank you. So...
We don't know what...
What she had, right, exactly. So that's, so if you will please clarify the motion you want on the floor, ma'am.
I would clarify my motion so that it will state that we will go back to the original condition of up to the maximum of ninety thousand dollars, which not exceed ninety thousand dollars. And we will pay fifty percent of the cost.
Fifty percent of the cost not to exceed ninety thousand dollars?
Not to exceed.
And do you have a term on that?
And the term is for the next two years.
So the same term as the one that's on the table now?
The same term as the original.
So that was July first, two thousand and twenty, through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three?
That was the original, correct.
That was, well, the original, the original, that's the current that when Councilmember Neal asked us to change it, that is the term of that motion. It ends on our fiscal year. The BISD original agreement did not have a term. It was a month-to-month, thirty-day written notice from either party.
Well, actually, it was nine, up to ninety thousand dollars. Well, actually, it, it was nine, up to ninety thousand dollars with no, it was an annual, up to ninety thousand dollars with no specific term.
That's right, so it didn't have an ending date.
Right.
But you could, it's had a termination by, by either party of thirty days, written notice, correct? So, but what we have now, um, is a term until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, but the, the original agreement that they sent us had no term.
Okay, and what I would like to do, the clarification, is to add, make sure year twenty, twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two has a maximum of ninety thousand. And then year twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-three has a maximum of ninety thousand.
And you mean fiscal year twenty-twenty?
Fiscal year.
Fiscal, so that would end September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
On the fiscal year?
On the fiscal year. That's the clarification.
Okay, so, to repeat, the motion is to, um, pay ninety thousand dollars or half, which, and up to ninety thousand, beginning now, through the end of our fiscal year, which is September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Is that right, Councilmember?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, do you still second that motion, Councilmember Oddwin Samuel? Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor of that motion?
What, where, do we have a discussion?
Yes, you can, go ahead, I thought we had already discussed it.
Just have one question there.
Okay.
Uh, maybe this is for legal, just for, um, is there any reason why we would wanna add termination clauses in this that would be a two-way termination clause?
We would include a termination clause.
Versus just the multi-year deal? I don't know, I mean, I kinda like the idea of the last one that was in there, because it was simple, just a thirty-day termination clause by either party.
That's in all of ours, pretty much.
It's not in the, it's not in this.
It's not in the existing one.
Okay.
Is that?
That's whether you have a term or not.
Is there anybody here, is there anybody here from the school district that could speak on that? On whether or not they would agree with that now?
They, she can't because the board, um, Dr. Allen's here, but it's up to the board. But they're posted to take action if we take one.
Okay.
But.
But I would like to, I would like to possibly add a termination clause in here, if possible.
Does that need to be made in the form of an amendment?
I would prefer Councilman Muton do it.
If it requires.
Okay, a thirty-day notion, uh, written notice from either party is in, it's in almost all of ours. So, if it's not in this one, that's unusual. So, when, when the school district presented to us, they presented no term, like, not ending on twenty twenty-three, just no term with a thirty-day written notice. But you can have a term in it and a termination clause, correct?
And that's healthy for both parties.
It is.
So, do I need to make another amendment?
It will be included in it, but, uh.
So, it will be included.
Would you just say to include, um, thirty-day?
To include the thirty-day.
Written notice by either party?
Written notice by either party.
Okay. Alright, so, anything else?
Uh, you know, this, this whole issue started, I think, back in twenty twelve, uh, when we received a letter from the city manager indicating that they wanted to, that there was a desire to turn this management of the school crossing guard program over from the city to the school district. And it, that letter, as I recall, also raised the possibility of changing the funding of the way the city was paying fifty percent of the cost of the crossing guard program back then to BISD. You know, that didn't go over too well, it was controversial then, it was divisive then. And, we kinda backed, well, it, it was, it was because I remember clearly that, uh, there was a point, counterpoint editorial in the Beaumont Enterprise that read that the Beaumont ISD has, this was dated, uh, back May twenty-second, twenty twelve. It said, "The Beaumont ISD has, has had a good deal for many years regarding crossing guards. Since nineteen eighty-six, the city of Beaumont cooperated with the district to provide the guards. But now the city wants to stop administering the program and may also stop funding its share. The city council should make that move. School crossing guards should be the responsibility of, well, schools. Traditionally, many cities in the southeast Texas have paid all or part of the cross, of the guards' pay, but that doesn't make it appropriate. Each governmental entity should focus on its core mission and be careful about using tax dollars for anything else. The Beaumont ISD also has its own police force that could do part of this job without hiring more officers. The issue boils down to the safety of schoolchildren entering school property. That is clearly a function of the local school district, not the city or county or any other taxing entity." Now, that's what the Beaumont Enterprise said back in twenty twelve. After that came out, as I recall, uh, the superintendent then at the school district said that if the city stops funding their portion of the crossing guard program, that the school district may not have a crossing guard program. So, that, of course, we all recognize, and I said this last week. This is something that every single person that I have talked to believes is incredibly important, that we have a crossing guard program. So, when all that happened back in twenty twelve, it was decided that things would change, that the city of Beaumont would no longer administer the crossing guard program, but that the school district would administer it and the city would pay up to a certain amount to fund the crossing guard program each year. And that rocked along until last year, when two councilmembers made a motion and a second to change it, which is what we're talking about today. I was not part of that. I had nothing to do with that. That was not something that I initiated. But it was passed, and I did vote with the majority on that. It was passed four to three, it was controversial, it was divisive. But we put it to bed, or I thought we had put it to bed. And, six months later, here it comes back again. And again, it's controversial and divisive, but I didn't bring it back. I wasn't part of that either. So, I'm saying all that to say this. I think it is actually commendable, Councilmember Muton, that when you have something that you feel strongly about as you do this program, and the city paying half of it, I think it's commendable that you bring something back that you feel passionately about. I brought things back that might not have gone my way in the past, and I've been criticized for bringing it back. Supposed to be, well, let it rest, we've already voted on that. Okay, well, in this case, you're bringing something back, and I think it's commendable that you're standing your ground on that. I do continue to believe that we should talk to the school district, but we have previously funded this program for up to three years. And, I don't have a problem with paying for school crossing guards from the city because it has turned out to be divisive. And it is. I think we should go ahead and fund it and then talk to the school district and find out what the path forward is going to be. But I think that still needs to be done after the election, and I understand the complications that have been caused by creating this on the agenda for tonight.
Mayor, can we call for the vote?
I, I, I do have.
I do try to let everyone say what they need to say, so, let's do that.
My question is to legal. If there were no crossing guard programs, who would be responsible for the safety of the children crossing the right-of-way in the city of Beaumont?
I'll answer it this way, traffic safety is the responsibility of the city of Beaumont.
Thank you.
The citizens who cross the city's rights of way, uh, are the responsibility of the city. Once they enter the school property, then they become the responsibility of the school.
Can I ask a question? Isn't it also?
I'm still, I'm still having thoughts. Have we had any incidents where a car has hit a child in the front door of a school?
I'm not aware of that, no.
Okay. So, the danger is in the right-of-way. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the right-of-way is our responsibility?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
The right-of-way and crossing the street? The whole street?
The intersections, yeah.
Can I ask a question of that?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Attorney, it's my understanding that it's not the city's responsibility, it's the parents' responsibility to ultimately get their kids across the street.
Well, ultimately, sure, yeah.
I mean, how would the city be liable on that?
It wouldn't be liable.
Look, I support crossing guards, but just that, it...
There's a, there's a difference between responsible and legally liable. And when you talk about legally liable, then we get into the TARP Claims Act, and then it may involve motor, or has to involve motor, involve motor-driven vehicles or equipment.
But then it's the driver's responsibility at that point.
It becomes an issue as to whose responsibility it is.
Mayor, Mayor?
What, are you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay, look, there's no right or wrong answer to this question. This is done differently in cities throughout the state of Texas. Some cities pay for all the crossing guards. Some cities have the school districts pay for the crossing guard program. Some cities have a combination, that's what we're currently doing here in Beaumont. Neither one's right, neither one's wrong. I will tell you that I have researched this, and I have found that the larger cities are actually able to have a fee assessed from when you register your vehicles at the tax assessor's offers, office. If you have a population of eight hundred and fifty thousand or more, the large cities get a dollar fifty back from their automobile registration to help fund the crossing guard program. I don't know if anything like that could be done in a population under eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't know why that figure was arbitrarily selected, but that appears to be what state law says. There are a lot of streets that children cross between their home and school that don't have crossing guard programs, because as I understand it with BISD, unless you live over a mile away from the school, maybe it's more than that, you can't get on the bus. So, the options to the parent of the children become, I either take my child to school or I let my child walk or ride their bike to school. And in that process, there's gonna be a lot of streets that they have to cross, that they don't have crossing guards. People need to be careful when children are out walking to and from school. There's school zones, and the lights are flashing, and the speed limit is lowered for a reason. Be careful. But not everybody is careful. People drive distractedly. You know, even with a crossing guard, and we've seen videos of this, they're all over social media. You have crossing guards and you have cars barrel through, even with the crossing guard standing there with a stop sign. Whose responsibility is it if that child gets killed? Is it the crossing guards for not putting their body in front of a car? No! It's the motorists that isn't paying attention. So, we cannot financially afford to put a crossing guard at every street in Beaumont that a child might have to cross from their house to school. We do it on major streets. I don't even know what the criteria is that currently BISD uses to select which streets need crossing guards. I don't know if it's based on vehicle count, I, I don't know what criteria is used. That's one of the things that I think we need to talk to the school board about. I have an open mind on this issue. I don't hate the school district, as one of our councilmembers went on social media last night and said, "I want to work with the school district." I think we have to work with the school district. It's vital. I wanna see this program work. And with that, I'm ready to vote.
Mayor?
Um.
Call for the vote, please.
Okay. I have a councilmember who's had his hand up, Councilmember Pate, if you wanna go ahead. Then, did you have something to?
I'm calling for the vote.
Okay.
It's my second call for the vote.
Well, I know we don't follow Roberts Rules, but, one of the great things about Roberts Rules is everybody gets to talk. And, uh...
And I try to do that.
Right, and I appreciate it, Mayor. I wanna clarify, if we vote on, uh, Councilmember Muton, uh, uh, motion, it would mean that we're paying up to ninety thousand dollars for the next three years, correct?
Two, two.
Next two, we already committed for this year.
We're in the middle of the first year.
Right.
It'll end.
But the clarification was that it would be this year and two more years. If that's the case, is there any reason for us to meet with BISD this afternoon, uh, about crossing guards?
They have it posted to vote. They can vote tonight. If we, if we move forward with this motion and they accept it, they can vote tonight. We can't just not go meet with them. I, I, I'm not gonna just not go meet with them.
Well, point of clarification, what, what is their vote on?
Mayor?
To accept our, what we're saying, they didn't accept it the last time, that's why we're here.
No, they did accept it, they signed their own local agreement.
But my...
But they, it, you know that they weren't happy with it.
But they signed the agreement, it, it was accepted, it was done.
But we had two, just like you said earlier, we had two councilmembers that brought it back for whatever reason. So, I assume that they talked to someone with the school district, I can't say that for sure, I don't know. But, I do know that after it, they were not happy. And I do work with them, because I talked about it last week, through emergency situations, we work very closely with the school district. We need to work very closely with the school district. This, to me, shows good faith, it's not worth arguing over. We're arguing over the minors, we have much bigger fish to fry here than, than this.
I agree with that.
So, my clarification is, once we vote on this, if it passes, then what would our discussion be with BISD tonight about crossing guard?
If we could ever get to the vote, we'll get to your question.
No, well, see, I'm not one of those, pass the bill and then we'll tell you what's in it.
It's not a secret.
Yeah, you know.
It's no secret, Councilmember.
But, my point is...
No, don't act like we're not being transparent, because I think we've been really transparent.
We've been very transparent.
No, I, I think it's a... Let me try to answer that, this is clear as mud, you know, for the public. The council voted last week to set up a meeting with BISD. The mayor followed that vote, which was a four to three vote by you. So, the mayor set it up, right?
I set it up and I didn't even vote for it.
And they have busy schedules, so we have a meeting set at five o'clock to talk about the crossing guard program and other items of mutual benefit or concern. We've worked with them on a myriad of issues forever, right? So, it gives you an opportunity to talk about other issues you may be concerned about, that's the way it was set up. So, you know, visiting with the mayor yesterday on a Zoom call with Dr. Allen and a few others, City Attorney. So, I think it's disingenuous to set up a meeting, y'all are the ones that wanted to do it, for us to set up a meeting and you don't show up. So, that, the mayor's going, and of course, City Attorney and I are gonna go because of that, I think Councilman Samuel's going. We're gonna go, right? So, there's other items that you can discuss, you may or may not choose to do that. And they posted this item to take action tonight, so, I would hope that all of you would go, uh, even if you go for a short while. You set up a meeting with someone, I think you oughta try to show up.
I did not know about the conflict when I set this up, I did it on a Tuesday for that purpose, because we're usually here. So, can we call for the vote now? Is everybody through? Alright, good. So, there's a motion and a second on the floor, and I think we all know what that's for, right? I don't need to repeat it, do I? Anybody? We good? Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously, great, thank you very much. Alright, so, that is item number three. And we have a public hearing next. If you wanna read the caption, please, and then we have an action item after that public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and Council, item number four is to, the items to consider approving a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-one annual action plan. So, the proposed budget reflects, these are estimated allocations from Department of Housing and Urban Development. Estimated one million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand NCDBG funding. Estimated one million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand in CDBG funding, an estimated one hundred thousand dollars in program income, and an estimated five hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars in home funding. So, it does state in this memo that the amounts may change before the final adoption, as we receive those final amounts from HUD. A public hearing is required before you consider adopting the 2021 plan. So, be appropriate, Mayor, to have that public hearing, and we'll ask you to consider the item.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak in this public hearing? I will open the floor for that purpose as read. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on the adopting the 2021 Annual Action Plan for Public Service and Public Facility Improvement? There's no one, I'll close the public hearing. Council, is there a motion on item number four?
Move to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion, questions, comments? There being none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Now, I will open up the microphone for public comment. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak, if you would like to make public comment, and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room, hand it to the city clerk at the front of the room, she will call out your name. We'd appreciate it if you keep your comments to three minutes, the green light will come on when you approach the podium, the red light will come on when your time is up.
Landry Roundtree, fifteen sixty-five South Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. Recently, at a council meeting, City Attorney Tyron Cooper stated that I come up here and remind y'all of my discrepancies in the past. And, no sir, that is not what I do, I want to set the record straight. I come up here to remind you of the city's discrepancies, and also of their, his office's discrepancies. And he said, states that I attack his character, which I do not want to, but I feel like sometimes you must, if you're going to attack something to somebody, if you have a car wrecked, you're going to be required to have a wreck, a car. If you have a house burglar garage, it's going to require you to have a house. For your integrity to be attacked, requires you to be, have integrity. Recently, Mr. Cooper talked to you for three and a half minutes, and I counted over ten items that were either not truthful or not factual. And also, I've dealt with his staff. One, I went to court with against, and he told a lie during his closing argument, he's no longer with us because...
Do not mention any names, please.
I didn't. You're taking my time, Mayor.
I'm asking you not to mention any names.
I didn't mention anyone. Also, I went to court, and that person was later, no, no longer here after two DWIs in thirty-six hours, he's no longer working for Mr. Cooper. Another person, a senior attorney for Mr. Cooper, I filed charges on for tampering with evidence. And then another one that presently is employed with him, I filed, I mean, I've complained about them attempting to change records that I was supposed to come up here and sign by court order. The records I ever came up here to sign had been changed. So, I'm questioning his, his integrity. But there was one guy, nice guy, Grant Boston, he was here, and I knew he wasn't last.
I asked you not to mention any names, Mr. Roundtree.
He was a city employee, thank you. But anyway, he's no longer here, and I understand why, very nice guy. He dismissed three hundred and eighty-eight tickets that the city, Beaumont Police Department Traffic Department filed against me, and told me that it shouldn't ever happen. Once again, I'm questioning, reaching out to the city council to please look at Mr. Cooper's actions recently. I'd like for y'all to discuss him, I think he needs to be recommended. Thank you very much. And also, if, if I'm the one that needs to be recommended, I brought two hundred and fifty dollars today. Mr. Cooper, tell me five things that I said that are not true, and I'll be glad to donate fifty dollars for each item to some other place to help to feed the hungry and the homeless. Thank you very much.
Can I do that next week?
Today, I'm promised with?
Yeah, bring it back.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree.
Brian Nigbo, sixty-nine fifty-five, Shanahan, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Guess the questions were already answered on the agenda for the crossing guards. Congratulations for coming to an agreement. I think that that could have been done a couple of weeks ago. The fifty-fifty sounds fair to, I guess, any, any of the citizens that would have resolved any of questions of decisiveness, divisiveness. The only question that I had, and it's not a question because you can't answer, was there are also kids that go to private schools, and I don't know that they're any different than any of the other children that go to public schools. They may, you know, may be a misunderstanding that, you know, people that attend private, kids that attend private schools may, you know, have transportation for them. Well, they obviously don't, they don't have school buses to take them, their parents may be at work just like everybody else. Just because the parents chose private schools for their children doesn't mean that they, you know, have special treatment. I guess my comment was, if the city is going to fund fifty percent for BISD, maybe it's a question, would they fund the same thing for St. Anne's and other schools, Legacy as such, for those kids as well? That was my only question. It's not a, it's a comment, not a question. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Nigbo.
Demetrius Dorsey, sixty-eight, ten, Pritzman Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question, like, the city, we get fuel from there, and by them shutting us down, we can't, because we've got a business, we can't get any fuel anymore. And so, they, we, he came last week to check into transportation, and they told us to come here. So, I was coming, because I have a question of how, how do we go by, you know, still getting our fuel from the city?
Okay, we can't have a discussion from him here, ma'am, because it's not posted, but if you kind of tell me, we can have someone talk to you afterwards. Are you, who are you with that you need fuel? I don't, I don't know who you're...
We have our own business, it's God Graced African Market on College Street. So, but we only run off of natural gas.
I think you'll talk to Mr. Boone after the meeting, right here.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey.
Albert A.J. Turner, I think that's ninety-seven twenty, Mississippi Street, Beaumont, Texas.
First and foremost, I want to say thank you to all the council members who took the time out to actually discuss this item, and be open minded, and feel like you want to do the best thing to move in the best interest of the city of Beaumont. For the ones who sat down with me, I appreciate you guys. I think this is a direction we need to move in with positivity in the city of Beaumont. I seen a lot of negativity shower, but I seen you guys step up and vote in unison for this issue that you guys said controversial, that was, that was controversial. To the ones who considered making the change, I respect it, I thank y'all for stepping up and making the change to do what's best for our city to move in the right direction. And I like the fact that I did see our council vote to do what's the best thing for the city of Beaumont, even though some people did have idea that that may not be the best thing. I just want to say I appreciate everyone who sat down with me and had open dialogue. I appreciate it, and I think that's the direction we need to go in order to move the city forward. So, I just want to say, I came here today, and even though it was a little discussion, you guys voted to move in the right direction, and what I say, I appreciate you guys, and this is the start to move to a new direction with the city of Beaumont.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. That's all I have, Mayor. Is there any other citizen who wishes to speak? There's none, I'll move to council member comments, and I'll start with you, Councilmember Muton.
Thank you, Mayor. We are in early voting right now, and everyone get out, exercise your right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Samuel? Councilmember Pate?
Thank you, Mayor. Echo Councilmember Muton's remarks. Rogers Park, Johns, Willard, and Jefferson County are the four, I believe, early voting places. So, you can go to any of those and exercise your right to vote, for a lot of people sacrificed so you could. And it's really important. I want to congratulate our friends, our soccer team at Kelly, and I apologize if I mispronounced some of those names. Like I said, when I was growing up, there were a whole lot of Totoras's and Messinas', and I had all those names down pretty well back then. Also, I want to say congratulations to Beaumont because of the great chief of police that we have, and the great job that Jimmy's done. Jimmy and I have known each other pretty much our whole life. He does a great job for us, he is a dedicated public servant, and he's modest, as you could tell when he got up here today. He's just, he's a great guy, and he does a fine job for us, and we appreciate him. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Six months ago, when the funding of the BISD crossing guard program came before this council, for me, at that time, it was an accounting issue of commingling the budgets of two taxing entities. It was never an issue of not wanting to support BISD or not caring about the students. I knew the amount of money being considered would have no significant impact on either budget of the city or of the school district. But after listening to citizens, BISD, city staff, and leaders in the community, I realized that this was a much deeper concern than an accounting issue. With new and greater information, and that's important, with new and greater information, I came to an understanding that, one, the city commingles its budget on projects with other taxing entities, such as the Port of Beaumont County DD six. And then, number two, I came to understand that my vote telegraphed the wrong message to the school district and to the parents. Leaders make decisions on the information that is directly in front of them at the time. Often, new and greater information will be brought to their attention, and when possible, leaders have a responsibility to correct any mistakes that they may make. If I believed that my decision six months ago was good and right, I would stand by that decision regardless of public pressure. But today, in an effort to correct my mistake, I cast my vote to reinstate the city's position on funding for the crossing guard program, and I look forward to finding new and greater ways to partner with BISD for the sake of our children and for our city. And I do commend this council for coming together in unity and casting the vote of support to send a clear message to BISD, to the parents, to the teachers, the staff and faculty, and all the students that we do care, and we do want to partner with you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember, Councilmember Gitts?
Councilmember Felshaw, can I have my notes back? No, I'm just saying, I want, I want to compliment you on that, that was very well said, and I agree with what you said. I have had a lot of questions brought to me about the charter change amendments. And, you know, we had a workshop here at city council where we went through a PowerPoint presentation, and we discussed them in some detail. I would like for us to pin that to our city website, or our Facebook page, or both of those, so citizens can easily access that. I guess if we figured out the date...
February second.
February second, thank you, Mayor. I guess if we don't want to pin it, all the videos are archived, and I can direct citizens back to that discussion on February second, twenty twenty-one. But that is where you will find some explanations as to why some of these charter changes are being proposed. And that would be, my advice is to go look at what was already there at a public meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Real quickly, Councilman Samuel visited with me in the last two weeks regarding what the city can possibly do as it relates to the abandoned buildings located downtown that are owned by private citizens. So, Chris Boone and staff did some research, and I would normally give this to you upstairs, we don't have an executive session today. So, I'm going to just pass this out to you. It's an ordinance survey of a number of cities, so please take that with you. And then, second, there's a good article that I'm going to pass around that happens to be in, in Public Management Magazine's April issue, and I think you'll enjoy it, maybe. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. You have anything? Okay. Because of the propositions that we had the last time that we discussed, Councilmember Gitts, I know you asked me to have that put on the website, and I had planned to do so, but upon advice at council, I did not because of what happened the last time we got fined, because it looks like if we tag it and we don't tag others, that we're promoting it. And we can't promote it on city time, and that is a city website, but I just sent you the link. As far as everything that happened today, I think it was a good meeting, and I, I know that sometimes y'all get frustrated if I keep letting people talk, but I just feel like that it's, it's everyone's right to say what they need to say. We can call for a vote, and I want to do that, but I appreciate how you feel about it, so do I, but I've, that's always been my practice, is that everyone should get a chance to be heard, and I think that's important. I also know that it's my responsibility to make sure that the meeting runs smoothly, and I try to do that most of the time, but sometimes it does get out of hand, and I do the best I can. And I want to remind the public, there are rules about when you come up to our podium and speak, and I don't know if everyone's read them, but we do not allow you to, you can call us by name, because we're your council members that you vote for, Councilmember Ames, Council, or, I guess I'm mayor now, huh? Well, I used to be a council member, and then all of these. But as far as our city staff, it's not right to call out city staff members, because they're not here to speak for themselves. So, I just wanted to clarify that, if you don't mind, if you do speak here frequently, please familiarize yourself with the rules we put in place. We did that about the same time that we did the rules for council, we didn't really use to have any rules for council. You've heard us a few times today say that we don't abide by Robert's rules, and one of the reasons was because of the parliamentarian position would be a big position that we'd have to, and a future council may do that, and that's fine. But we do have rules in place, and that's why sometimes you'll hear us explaining and saying why we're doing certain things, and how we're doing them. And sometimes it does get a little bit confusing, apologize for that, but that's the process. The process is that everyone gets to speak, everyone has their own views, and we respect those views, and once that decision's made, we hopefully move forward. So, thanks to everyone today for your comments, thanks for y'all, those of you who care so much about it, because I think it is important. And I just want to reiterate one more time, because I was looking at some information today about our disasters that we've had over the last, actually, I looked for about ten years, but just the last year, how many times we had to partnership with different governmental entities to get done what we needed to get done, and private industry, to get done what we needed to get done to move our city forward, and for the safety and well-being of our citizens. And I think it's always important that we, that we continue to do that, whether, whoever it might be. To clarify, Councilmember Gitts is right, in two thousand and twelve, we did make a change, and I, I was the mayor then, and Col Hayes was the city manager, and we did go and speak with the superintendent, and the issue was, at that time, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hayes, but I believe that the issue was that we were actually hiring, firing, training, scheduling, paying the school crossing guards. There was a conflict there, because sometimes they let school out when we don't know, there's a lot of different reasons, because the employees worked for us, but they didn't really work for us, if you know what I mean. So, the idea was brought up that we still wanted to partnership, and we would fund half our ninety thousand dollars, whichever's greater, per, I mean, no, I'm sorry, not more than ninety thousand dollars. If it got to be, let's say, it was a hundred and eighty, around a hundred and eighty, if it got to be, you know, more than that, then we would still only go to ninety. Now, if it was less than that, it would be less for us, but, and that's what we ended up doing. So, we basically flipped positions where they actually hire, fire, train... So we basically flipped positions where they actually hire, fire, train, schedule, pay those employees, and then they pay half and we pay half. I think it's a very, very good and fair and equitable, in my opinion, for the, for both entities. And to talk about private schools, private schools are not funded by tax dollars. Public schools are. We're funded by tax dollars. That is the difference, in my opinion, also. So, but it, it is true that they're not. But, so I just wanted to clarify that for anyone that might be listening, because we did actually go and meet with the former superintendent and ask if that change be made, and it works much better. You know, they have to pay matching, all that stuff, all the payroll stuff is done by B I S D, and, and we just, we have a contract or an agreement with them each year to share in that cost. I believe it is our streets, I believe it is our right of ways. There's an argument to be made on both sides. There's no right or wrong, it's just how you, how you believe it should be. But I just want to say I appreciate the council today coming together so we can move forward on this and hopefully have a good relationship in the future with this council or future councils and with this Board of Trustees or future Board of Trustees to work together for a common good, and I think that's always a good thing to do. So with that, that's all I have to say. I didn't want to say it before the vote a while ago, y'all might have, I won't say what you might have done to me, but I'm just making a joke. So I appreciate y'all coming today, and we do not have an, sorry. No, we do not. We do not have an executive session, but we are going to recess until our five o'clock meeting with the Board of Trustees that takes place over in the, in the lobby of the Civic Center at five o'clock. So it is a recess until that time. Thank y'all for coming.